Well, unless the internet's wrong, my records indicate that it's 5 o'clock. And we do have a meeting that starts at 5:00, various names and so on, so I'll call that meeting to order. And I guess it does need a roll call, right? Because it's, it isn't a meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's see, do we have a roll call?
Gody?
Yes.
Hess?
Here.
Hunkel?
Here.
Joss?
Here.
Gregor?
Here.
All right. So, we're kind of experimenting with something new here today. I think what we do in these sessions is probably going to be determined by what we think we should do with them, right? There are precedents for all this, right? You've researched some of them, you've experienced some of them. We've heard from other communities that rather than having an action period, then we just have a discussion period, right? So, that's the only boundary that I know of that relates to it, and we've obviously got through Luke and Lindsay working on it. We've got a list of items to discuss, and you're kind of the
Yeah.
...child of this, why don't you explain?
So, by all means, doesn't mean you don't have to discuss things at the regular council meeting. Just, a lot of the things that we won't be discussing here, the consent agenda things that are just normally your day-to-day things, they might be things that are newer, things that are coming up. You can ask questions on it in a little more relaxed environment and whatnot. It's also for staff, so they can come in here, give their appearance in their meeting, and then they can, they can leave too, so they don't have to be here for the entire duration. You may have a wasteland superintendent who's got a $10,000 purchase, you can come present, talk, you can ask questions, and then they can leave. So, I'm also here for some of that, too. So, as we just go through it, you can feel free to ask questions on any things that are coming up. They'll be kind of geared between what, you know, the attorney and the engineer, Josh is on here today, he's gonna give a little presentation on something, what I've got from, from the last couple of weeks, just stuff like that. If you guys have questions on anything, we'll just go from there.
Yeah. You know, in Evolup, I was there for Active City Attorney for a while, and literally, they just moved into actually almost like a conference table. And the idea is just to be able to talk to each other without a directed action point, right? To get updated and so on. So, again, let's see how it goes, and, you know, I'm sure it's our, it's to serve us as well as the public as a council, so I think we have considerable latitude of how to, how to structure it going forward in the future.
Yeah.
And just glad that Luke's got us this far to initiate a session.
Yeah, just to remind the public too, there is not any action that's taken at these meetings.
Yeah.
So, and also for you guys as well, if, you know, you've got a class, or you've got an appointment and you're running a little bit late, you can always reach out to me one-on-one, and I can go over things, and you can show up at 5:30 instead. So, they're not mandatory that you, you know, you have to do that.
Plus, we have a video recording of them for, for pasturials, so. Good. Well, you've prepared an agenda here, so should we note staff appearances, or have you talked with?
Yeah, so Jen's gonna be the answer to the trivia question, because she's the first staff appearance in the emergency meeting.
Oh, there you go.
So, she can give her update, but she's got three of them.
Okay. Well, the library's been really busy lately. We're really happy to be fully staffed, so thank you for, for Ashley, because she's been doing great, wonderful addition to the team, fast learner, there's a lot to learn, little bits and pieces, but she's handling it all really well, so that's been great. We finished our winter reading program, we had great results this year, very relaxed, so people loved that. Our former director was our top reader, so it's good to see that she's enjoying her, her free time now. We hosted the 3-2-1 Art Studio, we had an average of seven people each session, they all seemed to love it, you got to learn to paint, and they became artists if they didn't know they were, so. And then they hosted a little exhibition and refreshments at the last day, so people could see everybody's talents that they discovered. We started hosting what we call Kids Connection on Thursdays, so it's for, it's a self-directed group for moms, dads, caregivers to kind of get together, their kids can play, more preschool age that aren't in school yet, and gives them an opportunity just to kind of talk to their parents that are stuck in the house all day with little ones, too, and last week was really good, so I'm doubting tomorrow we'll pull through with the weather, but we're hoping to keep this going every Thursday for, for families. Let's see, so, we are partnering with Masabi Schools to host Minnesota author Mary Casanova coming up on Monday, April 17th. She will be visiting grades four through six in the auditorium. This event is open to the public, though, so if anybody's interested in attending Mary's visit, it starts at 10:00, and the school asks that you enter through door six, please. Our spring book sale is coming up on the 19th and 20th. It's a smaller book sale with no multimedia, but we still have lots of books and magazines available for purchase by donation, and the sale will be open during library hours. Let's see. Oh, and then we are doing, we've been doing inventory, which is quite the task, but it's nice to have Ashley on board, because extra hands make easy work, so. And we've been planning the summer reading program. This year's theme is Find Your Voice, and we have some events that ALS has planned and are paying for, so we've signed up for those and have those scheduled, and planning a lot more. And we are all looking forward to warmer weather. So, that's all I have.
Good. Nice to get it early and straight from you, as we've been tossing around reports periodically as all, as substitutes. So, yeah, city attorney, any updates?
We follow the agenda. Administrator updates is next.
Oh, the administrator, okay, yeah.
I agree on it.
Just real quick on the reorganization, I've got some job descriptions over to Mitch's office, and we're going to be meeting with the reorganization committee probably next week before the 12th at that point, and this is where you guys can give a little bit of feedback. We're gonna have two options, we can either take the job descriptions up here for you guys' approval, and then we can go to the union and try and open up the contract to do that negotiation, or if you're comfortable, if the reorganization committee is comfortable, we can just go to the union with the job descriptions, get the wages and stuff negotiated, and then bring it all up and do it all, approve it all at once. So, that's, that's just kind of where we're at with that, so.
Yeah, council, thoughts on how we ought to approach this whole issue of reorganization? So, you gave really two options.
Yeah, and if you just want to leave it up to the reorganization committee to, after we talk to see if they're comfortable, because they'll be in the meeting, it's up, you know, up to you guys.
I think we should wait for correction from that committee.
I agree, and that's what we pointed out.
Sure.
Why, why don't we manage that?
I'd like, I'd like to get the direction from the committee, but I think before going to like the union and stuff, I'd like to get a general
Update.
...lay of the land.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I
Could we review the job descriptions through email?
Well, absolutely.
That would probably
I assume it's gonna be one of those great org charts of
Already done.
Already done, yeah, okay. Gives us some ideas on that, so.
Yeah, I can, I can send them all through email, and, and we can also talk at the council meeting on the 18th before, I mean, if you guys want to approve them and bring them up on the 18th, it's only a matter of a couple of extra days. We can just do that, so you're comfortable with it, so it's not gonna be that big of a deal.
So, when, when we come up with an organizational chart and we go to the unions, other than setting wage and work hours and things like that, isn't it our management
Yes.
prerogative to set up
Yep.
what the positions are, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And Mitch will give you that guidance, so he'll, he'll be a part of that, and he said he could make the 18th if that's, if you wanted him there, but if you're also, and I guess that's really what it's for, is if you guys are comfortable, Mitch will be at the meeting with three or a committee, I believe, so if they're comfortable with it with Mitch, then we'll just do that.
So far, has the union had any kind of input about who would be promoted? Does it go seniority, or?
The contract reads preference is given to a senior person, so if there was two people, doesn't necessarily mean that it would be that way, it just says preference-wise, and again, I'd like to leave this up to Mitch to, you know, elaborate more on, but I believe if we had a couple of people trying to bid, we would probably have an interview and see how that went, with the preference, you know, maybe the prefer point, preference points or something, we'd have to talk to Mitch about that.
Because that'll have to be posted in, also.
Correct.
There'll obviously be salary adjustments then, too.
Yeah.
Granted, with what the responsibilities are, right?
Yep, and those will be discussed, too.
Would that in turn then spill back to us for a revised budget or something, or what?
Well, it would be absorbed from Wain's, you know, you're losing Wain's, you'd be losing some, you'd be gaining some dollars there, so some of them dollars just get redistributed.
Redistributed, okay.
Yeah, so we would still be within budget.
Pick down one worker.
We would be, well, we'll be hiring another worker then, too, but that person would be in the union, so that person's wage, between hiring the new worker and then the wage savings that you'd have to redistribute, you'll still be in budget.
Okay.
Other thoughts on that topic? That's exciting to have the opportunity, isn't it, to sort of reflect and to actually reorganize, you know, and getting a somewhat clean slate there, that's, and then having Luke on board with all those different experiences, too, to bring to the table. Yeah, I just, yeah, doesn't happen often in the organizations I've been a part of. Maybe the school system until they share it out.
I'm listening to talk about that.
Oh, okay, we won't go into that. Okay, sorry to interrupt, Luke.
Yep, the things that I just kind of wanted to highlight that are in the agenda that you might want to know about is, I do have travel in there for the MFC away clerks conference certification, so this is, we've talked about all three of us going at the same time, and I just looked at the itinerary, and I do believe it's beneficial for just me to go and start getting into it, and then we'll budget for the girls to go next year, and we'll figure that out. So, that's what's in there. It's a three-year course, I would be getting my clerk's certification at the end of the three years. I've already applied to be a member of the clerks association, so that is in May, and you guys have sent Becky to that, and I believe, I don't know if steps are better or not, but so that's in there. If you have any questions on that. There's Miss Aurora Scholarship, we have not done this before, these will be coming out of the gambling funds, so it's something for you to consider. The gambling funds, after you just made the approval for the pumpkin fest, is $18,000. So, what they're asking for is $800 total, or it's up, it's up to you guys. There's a $500 scholarship for Miss Aurora, and there's a $300 scholarship for the runner-up. You can choose to fund both of them, you can choose to fund one of them, you can fund half, whatever you'd like to do, but their total ask would be $800.
That's from the chamber asking, right?
It's the Miss Aurora, can you?
Yeah, hasn't the chamber handled that before, or not?
Has anyone handled that? Yeah.
Why, what's changed that, I mean, it's not that they organized it, they actually have funded it, haven't they, in the past?
I think last year, Lindsay could better answer this, because she was in charge of that, but it was quite expensive last year, and as you know, our chamber does not have the funds like Hoyt Lakes does, it has fewer business members, and they just can't afford to support Becky. They, they, the chamber pays for various events for the participants, so they just asked Lindsay for the numbers, but it is quite expensive. And the scholarship is up enough beyond what the scope of what Miss Aurora has done in the past.
I know they used to offer scholarships.
I think it's a good thing.
I think it's a great thing.
Yeah, I thought that was the lure it could get, in addition to the notoriety, but, you know, that there is a tangible
Or maybe they did have scholar, I don't believe they did.
They had scholarships.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because when, how much do you know?
Really got it.
It's the same thing, I think.
I think it was.
I think they have a special fund set away for the ones that
I'm not familiar, I know that Lindsay is typically, or last year she was in charge.
Just a little on-site, there's a chamber meeting here on Thursday at 4:00. Okay. Any questions?
Funding this, will it cut funds away from any other thing we're currently funding?
No, it's just, it's the gambling funds, and there's $18,000 in there, and we still have not received, I think, the last three or four quarters of penis, so we're, we're still waiting on some funds to come into it, so. And then also with the gambling funds, the volunteer dinner, and some thank you prizes, or some thank you handouts, I guess I should say, is about $2,500, so you could potentially fund the volunteer dinner out of that. It's an eligible expense, because it's a volunteer community expense, so I know people have talked about donating to it in the past, out of their own personal pockets, but this is an option for you, if you'd like to do that, that's in here as well, too. So, that's on there tonight.
Well, if the chamber's hurting for cash, you know, just to relieve them a little bit, there are a lot of other things that they could and should be doing in a kind of recovery period, so, yeah, I just, it's interesting to think about reshuffling, and the gambling revenues are, nice question, huh? Have them available.
The Chamber, Aurora Chamber, is funded by businesses. Businesses pay their business fee, and it goes to the Chamber, and that is no sole source of funding.
Yeah.
Whereas Hoyt Lakes has charitable gambling as part of their Chamber. There's the difference.
Didn't the Chamber historically have some fundraising events, or not? I guess I'm not old enough.
Richard, probably.
Well.
Well, the only other thing I have is short-term and long-term rental ordinances, there's drafts up for review tonight, and I'm gonna go let the attorney, that's a great lead-in for the attorney, I guess, for his updates, so those are at a draft.
Well, I'm Harry Drafts, so everybody gets a chance to look at it, and basically, it's, you know, kind of ahead of the curve, other communities experiencing problem or issues with it, so they don't have anything, ordinances or the like, so trying to, I think Luke and Lindsay have been working on it, trying to get ahead of the curve and have it on the books, and with the rental properties, not only Aurora, but other communities, they buy the property, they don't put any money into it, they collect the rent, and after a period of time, it's, you know, becomes blighted property. So, the inspection is good, that, you know, are they up to date, are they current, and it's not that big of an imposition on them, but, you know, the city finds out what's going on with that rental property, from public safety and potential health hazards, et cetera, what's going on in that house, is it truly a decent rentable piece of property, rather than just a flea bag type of place, so. And then the short term is, I don't know how much would happen in Aurora, but again, it'd be on the books, you know, who's coming in, where are they coming in, what are they doing, gives some control over registrational licensing, that, you know, the city knows what's going on in those properties. But take a look at it, and Norvah Jean might be more, we'll look from input from you, kind of from the realty part of it, you know, what's your thoughts are, as well as the rest of the council.
Well, I'm honestly, I'm a little excited about this. This is something that I've been begging for since Becky's been here, since Becky was here, so I'm very excited about it.
But we had a, we had a draft right back when she was here, and then it just kind of got pushed to the side for a while by other business, I think, right? Or was there, is there backstory on it?
Really? Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what happened, it just got lost in the shuffle.
Yeah.
I know
This is pretty much like the one we, this has got?
It's a little more, I think it's a little more
Involved.
They just, yeah, so we've looked at other communities and kind of grabbed things that kind of make the most sense for our geography, geographical area, and all the reasons and things.
Yeah, the, I know the Eastern Detroit Powers Board, working with Northspan, has talked about trying, if possible, to reach some consensus across the range, so there wasn't a shopping, you know, of communities particularly for the short-term rental.
Consistency, but each community does their own thing sometimes, and, you know, if you go to the mayor's meetings, you can get the flavor of the mayor's, at the mayor's meeting, what they're doing in their communities.
Yeah, well, we have a network I could tap into to find out, you know, there again, I think, though, that the housing stock, right, in different communities is really appreciably different, we'd want to find some comparing apples to apples, kind of a
I just think that it's important for our city is, what's happening is, and I'm seeing people coming in, they're purchasing properties for lower prices, they're putting these, they're putting renters in there, and they're not maintaining things. So, like Luke said, there's blight issues, people are living in houses that are potential health hazards. I've seen properties where the bathroom is leaking from upstairs rental unit into the dining room with a lower rental unit, and these people are, these renters from out of the area aren't doing a thing about it, because they're not here. So, it's protecting not only our properties around here, the values of our properties, so people aren't just coming in and buying the house next door and turning it into an unmanaged rental, number one, and when you have an unmanaged rental, it's not being taken care of, therefore in turn, it's turning my house, bringing it down in property value. I'm selling my house now for cheaper, and it's just gonna keep snowballing.
Yeah.
So, it's helping the people that are living in the area to make sure their property values stay right where they should be. Not only that, it's helping the people that are actually renting, so they have a safe environment to live in.
Yeah, no, it's a win-win, and that's it. And, I mean, it's not unique, obviously, to Aurora, right? That's why it's coming up in all these other communities, too, right? Because it's a pattern.
It is a pattern, and, I mean, I don't want to see our little towns end up being like a huge percentage of rentals, I think of like St. Paul, St. Paul, 51% rentals. What is that saying about real property? That means that there's more rentals in the city of St. Paul than there is here.
Is that a single-family residences or intermentals?
That's all rentals.
All rentals.
Virginia, they're pushing 50. The last I checked, they were pushing 50% rentals. So, pretty soon you're gonna have a city that is, I mean, more rentals than it is real property owners.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't want to see that happen in our little towns.
And I, I would gather, too, if we, whatever ordinance we do choose to adopt, isn't written in stone, right? We can, we can adapt it with experience.
Yeah, you can always amend it or change it or modify it, and, because sometimes on paper and how it actually works in practice doesn't work the way you thought, so kind of live and learn.
I know Biwabik was torn about, and after, they had to put a limit, right, on a number of either rental or short-term rentals, and got a lot of pushback on that, because this, this doesn't have necessarily a limit.
There's no limit, no limit.
No limit, okay.
You can always add one later if you'd like, or percentage, percentage of the houses that are available.
I know Duluth had discussions about how many rental properties could be around the UMD campus, because it affects the homeowners.
Property values, yeah, it does.
I'm realizing our discussions are interesting, but they're going on here, it's 5:24.
Actually, Josh here, yeah.
Yeah, we should hear, we, well, we have the city attorney to follow the agenda, any comments, city attorney, or?
Nothing further, people living in garages, people living in garages for heat, they're burning garbage and rubber boots and shingles and
Yep, I think that would come within the scope of the ordinance there, so, let's see, if I followed the agenda now, the city engineer update, Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen here. The most exciting piece I probably have to share is we've, we've made a decent amount of progress on the city GIS site, and I actually closed it. Let me get it pulled back up here, shucks. But I was really excited to show, and then I wanted to show North Magado, which is another community I've, I've worked a lot with, and just how far you can really leverage these things, so give me one second here. So, this, this is the online GIS system we've been working on, it currently has the city utilities, so sanitary sewer, water main, and then storm sewer systems. With that, we were able to host the county parcel data, things like the National Wetland Index mapping, the FEMA floodplain mapping is on here, and so with it as well, you can load, you know, a host of different images in the background as well. This is just a standard Google image, we are able to pull the, the county imagery in as well, once, once we're able to get our hands on that data, but just, it is, we are making progress, and so it's, it's gonna be a very handy tool for, for city staff. And so, green is obviously sanitary sewer, orange would be, would be storm sewer, and then blue would be your water main system. Any of the dots are either manholes or catch basins, things like that, but it does show kind of that whole robust city network. So, we built this based on the, the city stick map that we had, and so once the snow clears, the spring, if, if that's ever gonna happen, we'll get out there with our GPS and get all this, this line work updated to actual infield, precise survey level data, well, GPS level, not technically survey level. So, but with that, I mean, you can, you can host a bunch of different things as well, you know, each pipe, it has its size, it can have its material, the year it was installed, what project was it installed with, you know, the PDF that that's contained in, so you could tie it to an Asbilt and click on it, and so it just, it really takes out that effort to have to go to the drawer, pull out the file, flip through it, I mean, you just sign on, and, you know, that data is, is there, so. Definitely just, just a draft version at the moment, but we're, we're definitely making, making headway on it. You know, with it, like I said, too, it's got the, the county parcel data, so if you wanted to look up who lives at, you know, 312 West Second Avenue, it's, you know, very lesser, you know, whoever, it's part of this plat, the county has a very good index of all their plats and lots and blocks and stuff like that, so it's, I always say with GIS, if you can think it, it can do it, so there really is no limit with, with this software. With that, I'm about out of time, so a couple other things I wanted to touch on, we did hear back from IRRB on our Pine Grove Park Culture and Tourism Grant application, so they, they only had a certain amount of money, and they received about two to three times the requests for that money, and so they weren't able to allocate the full amount. So, we applied for the grant maximum for the Pine Grove Park parking lot of $30,000, they awarded us 10. Talking with city staff, it still made sense to accept that based on the CDBG funds, which require the prevailing wage, labor rates and stuff like that, which IRRB funds will as well, so there's really no big penalty to accept that, and it, it seems to make sense to, to contribute to the project and keep moving that along. The other final item I had, we are finalizing that capital improvement plan, and so working with city staff, we've kind of laid out finer detail in the next five years, very draft yet at this point, but then also looking out, you know, potentially to 10 years, just, there is a lot of needs, and so having that on the radar is a good thing. We're working with staff the next couple of weeks to come up with some scope of works to bring to council to potentially take the 2024 project to a, what I would call a shovel-ready state, which, what that enables us to do is solicit funding sources, you know, basically showing we're ready, we just need the funds, and so getting it to that point is an important piece, instead of just asking for money based on, you know, hopes and dreams, you know, hey, we're, we're committed to this, we want to move forward. It always shows well when, when you have plans on the shelf ready to go. With that, happily answering any questions that, that engineering's been working on.
Oh, just, just a quick comment, that this looks great, it's really like and see, this is really gonna give us a management handle that we haven't, we haven't had in the past, and dovetails so beautifully that a capital improvement project plan and the relative abundance of monies that are flowing out for different types of capital improvement projects, so, sounds great. Any other questions or comments of Josh? The record should note that our distinguished guest has arrived. Alumni Counselor Warshak.
I'm surprised he knows where to sit.
Yeah. He was looking for his
Oh, there's my chair.
He was looking for his name tag up there. Okay, Josh, that pretty well wraps up your report.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks the whole team there for the work, that's great.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. All right, let's see, I believe our time has expired, and in the interest of the public's dependence on us moving along at a schedule, unless there's some urgent matter or anything, Luke, that we haven't
That's all I have for that one.
Be interesting to hear reflections, okay, afterwards on how this went, but not right now, I think, right? Maybe we could fill a little time to digest it in our next meeting, talk about it, is that so? All right, so with that in mind, is there a motion to adjourn our workshop?
So
Move, support, support, moved and supported for the discussions, and then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, we stand adjourned on our workshop meeting.